Hi, Beth. I wasn't sure if you had the link or not.
I did. I was going through and like organizing like my tabs in order of what we're going to be doing things just to make my life a little easier and I got distracted doing that. Josh is going to be a couple of minutes late and I'm waiting to hear from the rest of the board and thank you for recording because that was going to be my first question is because I know one of the ways and means people can't make it tonight. So, perfect.
All right, I'm just gonna pause my video until we start at six.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hey.
Hey, Michelle.
Let's wait for Tom to hear us and pop back in. Josh is going to be a minute or two late. And Ellen is having a problem with the link, so hold on, I will tell her where to find it.
Okay. I just resented to her as well.
Thank you. Yeah, she just couldn't find it, so I was telling her where to find it. So Josh is... Oh, Josh is already here. Um, okay, so while Ellen is clicking on the link and getting in, I will start the meeting. It is 6:01. I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is a budget workshop meeting of the Amherst School Board and I have my lovely script. Today, we will be conducting a school board meeting of the Amherst School Board. Before we get started, I'll read through a list, a checklist to ensure that the meeting that we are holding is in compliance with the right to know law. As chairperson of the Amherst School Board, I find that due to the state of the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12 pursuant to executive order 2020-4 and its extensions, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the executive, sorry, to the governor's emergency order. In accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone and with additional access possible by video and other electronic means. We are utilizing Zoom for this electronic meeting. All members of the committee and selected legislative staff have the ability to communicate contemporaneously in this meeting through this platform. And the public has access to contemporaneously watch and/or listen to the meeting on Zoom and via phone by following the directions and links provided on our website, www.seu39.org. We have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We are providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anyone has a problem, please email AWallace@SAU39.org. That is A-W-A-L-L-A-C-E@SAU39.org. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting, we'll be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Finally, let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state where you are and if anyone else is in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. And let's start with Tom.
Gothier is alone in his office.
Okay, Terry.
Beam is alone in my office as well.
Okay, and Josh?
Alone in my office.
And I am alone at home. And Michelle, she said she still can't find it.
Helen?
Yeah, she said she doesn't have one yet and can't find the old one and is asking you to resend it again.
I'll work on that with her.
Thank you. And then I'll roll call her in when she gets here. So tonight, we'll be going over the last few sections of our budget. This will be special services, curriculum, and technology. And then we'll also have a bit of a discussion on the J-FAC proposal that was brought to us at the SAU meeting. They will be presenting to us a little bit more in depth and a little bit more board slash budget specific at our meeting next Monday. So we can definitely, you know, talk about some things that we want to make sure are talked about at that meeting so that we can also make sure that in case we haven't asked those questions yet, we can send them tonight as well so that they're prepared to send them. And we can kind of get some initial additional, you know, talking about it. So let's get started. Of course, my special services one disappeared. I added up. Who had special services?
I do.
Well, you do. Which one of us had it?
That was a little bit of a joke.
Tom, was that you?
Correct.
All right, it's you and who else? Because that...
Not mistaken, I think I was by myself that day.
Oh, that was that way.
You were, but I think when I looked on the, in the Google sheet, Ellen, Ellen was on that as well, but she was unable to participate with us the other day, so it was just Tom.
Okay, so Tom, if you would like to get started and just kind of highlight a few things that, you know, came up, we have the information already that you wrote up and we'll make sure we also send that to tonight. Ooh. Wait a minute. Okay.
I used Josh's panelist invite.
Ellen!
It's just an homage to me.
I am not the end of my rope with most of the things in my life, but number one on the list is the goddamn Zoom invitations. I'm like, I'm out, so done, but I can jump over to J-FAC because I have that invitation.
So actually, since you started it before Tom gets started, first, can you roll call yourself in and let us know where you are and if you're alone or if somebody's in the room with you?
Yeah, Gruchin here in my office alone.
Okay. So the, just so all the board is aware with the, the way that the Zoom and the Zoom links are going for all of us as well as for the public that is listening in. For the public links, everybody is being asked to register ahead of time because we, in various, you know, areas, have run into some issues with fake public accounts coming in with some inappropriate content. So we are allowing people, but we are trying to verify that they are real people as they come in. So we're asking people to register ahead of time. If you register just as the meeting is starting, it might take a couple of extra minutes because the owner of the meeting actually needs to approve each person. So there is that. Also, the, so just, you know, members of the public, if you want to plan ahead a little bit, if not, it might take a couple of extra minutes. For board members as well as any panelists, the reason we are having multiple links is because panelists have to be sent out individually. The person that owns the meeting has to actually put our email addresses in, so they cannot be included in the original meeting invite. So they're, they will come through as a separate email. I recommend paying attention and as they come in, you can kind of create your own, like your own meeting agenda or your own item on your own calendar to kind of store that link to make it easier to find at the time of the meeting. I did talk to Abby about what was going on and why it's happening that way because their panelist ones are getting lost because they're not in there and she did inform me that that is why. So it is a pain, but in order to have the panelist aspect and things like that, that is the way things need to happen. So, um... So, okay, so Tom, we were getting started with special services.
Yeah, and Meg, please jump in and correct me if I'm misunderstanding something, which has certainly happened before, but there was approximately a $900,000 increase. I just redid the math and it looks like about 700 and change of that is based on purely salary slash personnel and benefits. That is where the bulk of that comes in, I guess highlighted if you want to say by the additional special ed teacher and then additional paras, which as a reminder, paras are only assigned on an individual IUP. We do not hire them just to hire them to have as extra teachers like interns. So there was one thing that was, the ESY was left out of the budget, the extended school year, that was 165,000 from last year and I failed to follow up with Michelle and Meg. They were going to connect after our meeting on that. Is that back in the budget now, Meg? Or Michelle, I should say, that additional amount? Because it should have been in there, but it was excluded because the amount was unknown at the time?
It's in there as a proposed adjustment, but Meg and I had actually talked about the programming as well and she's made some program modifications as well that will help to monitor the costs.
Okay.
While maintaining the same level of service. So I want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, we're not reducing the, the quality of the service.
Sure. So we did have about a $60,000 net increase for tuitioning students out of district. That's about 145,000 at Clark Wilkins, but a $90,000 reduction at AMS. There is some equipment total, equipment furniture total. Now that I'm looking at that, it might be on the wrong line, so I apologize, ignore that. I think I got my two budgets confused. There, the special ed teacher that is in there for Clark Wilkins that was funded last year, an IDEA grant, that is no longer eligible for that because it's now considered a needed service. That is why it has been added in. Last year, it was an emergency situation, so we were able to get a grant for that. But now because it is still a necessary service, we have to add that into our budget. So that is the reason for that increase. There's also like 124,000 increase in health insurance in the Special Ed Teachers Department, which certainly eats up a big chunk of the, you know, 900 and change that's being added on there. And then additionally, there are some, you know, speech pathologists and occupational therapy specialists. There's an increase in that because there's an increase for outside contracted help to help the two OTs and then speech pathology. I probably should go see them. Speech pathology was the increase, just natural increases over the course of year to year and the people that were hired. So, Meg, did I miss anything? Did I, everything I said was accurate, correct?
That was awesome. You're hired.
I don't think you want to do that. We rephrase that. I don't know that I want to do that. This, I've been deep enough with this as it is.
Those were the, you hit, you hit the high points. Yep, those are the biggies.
Okay. Do, does anybody have any questions for Tom or Meg about this particular area? All right, I have one quick one. So we actually talked about this special ed teacher over at the Clark Wilkins. Is it, was it just mentioned in both areas of the budget because it is a Clark Wilkins staff person, but it's also for special services? Or is there a chance that this person's been doubled up by accident?
That is a question from Michelle. I don't populate the staffing lines. What I do is I simply let Michelle know what we need for staffing and then she populates those lines. It's tricky with, you know, insurance and retirement and all of, all of that. So I wouldn't be able to answer that. Michelle could though.
Yeah, if we could just verify that, it may have just been come up in the Clark Wilkins discussion because Anna's quite passionate about that staff person. So we were just talking about it at the meeting, but it's not actually a line item, but I just want to make sure that it's not accidentally duplicated in both spots.
Can you, can you clarify that question again?
So when we were, during the Clark Wilkins budget meeting and things like that, this person came up. The, the special ed, the new special ed teacher that was under a grant, but we can't cover it under the grant. It came up during the budget discussion, but it could have just come up during budget discussion. It isn't a line item. So I just want to make sure that this person isn't accidentally duplicated in both areas because it's kind of one of those happens, you know.
In both areas.
Clark and Meg.
Yeah, I think she means regular ed line and special ed line herself, which I don't think it is, but...
Under Clark Wilkins, there is a special ed worker in there, but the salary differential is about 26,000. So I'm assuming that those are different people. One's a social worker and one is more of that teacher aspect. So it does look like they're different and it's the only special ed worker listed under Clark Wilkins.
Okay, thank you.
There is only one new special ed position for, that was moved from the grant.
Okay. Other than that, that was it. So is there anything, Tom, that you identified? I know this is special ed, so it's kind of a different topic and a different ball of wax, but was there anything that was identified as something that could potentially be removed from the budget if needed?
Top of my head, I don't, I don't remember exactly. On the, I will make a note for today when we send her over the special services budget. There is information about classroom equipment and furniture clarification. That can be removed. That was from the AMS discussion. I just got my two budgets messed up on that, so that can come out. Just as a side note, I just double checked on that. No, I mean, I think if that special ed teacher is needed and we can't, you know, get by without that, that is a necessary thing. That's 700,000 out of 900,000 is, is salaries and benefits and it's not a huge amount of personnel. It's not like it's six people or seven people. It's a therapist, speech, speech pathologist, and then it's the special ed teacher in Paris. And from my understanding that those are, you know, once we commit to doing this, those are the obligations that we have, the rules that we have to play by.
Yeah, so when I build my budget, I start from zero and I really take a look at the existing needs that I'm aware of in the moment. I have to sort of project out, you know, 12 months ahead of time, which is, can get a little bit tricky, especially when, you know, I kind of kid with Adam and Michelle that they're going to have me budget for children who aren't even born yet pretty soon, but so it gets a little, a little dicey, but we look at exact need, existing need as we know of it in the moment and we try and project from there. I don't ever just look at last year's figure and do an estimate based on that unless it's something like extended school year salaries. And so I looked at what we spent last summer and try and project out what we may need for the following summer because there isn't really any other for the following summer because there isn't really any other way to do it. But beyond that, I I count, I actually count units of service of OT, of PT, of vision, of speech. It's it's tedious, but but that's the way I build my budget.
Thank you. Josh, I saw your hand up for a second. Is it still up or no?
No, it was it was about the furniture and it sounds like that is not even supposed to be here. So I don't.
Trying to do two things at once when I wrote it.
Okay, so Ellen.
Um, Meg, so are you guys adding a full-time speech pathologist? Sorry, slipped in here a little later.
No, the contracted. So we have speech pathologists on staff. We're not adding any additional staff members. But we have some children who require specialized services because they have communication devices. And some speech paths have a special specialization in how to utilize communication devices and work with children who need communication devices. So there's been an increase for that type of service and we contract out for that.
Okay, got it.
And Ellen, I should have added that that covers two schools. It covers Clark Wilkins and then it covers AMS. It's not 45 for one school. I didn't specify that. I just did it. I grouped it together as a subcategory.
Okay, I ask Meg because I know that the area of speech pathology in our school system certainly is getting, it's busy. It's busy, busy, busy.
It is.
So yeah, so I was assuming you were saying, yeah, because it's crazy, but that makes sense.
To that point, we we're at that point right now with OT. So the OT contracted services that we've added is to help to support the actual OT services that are happening in in the buildings, but we're not knock on wood, get there yet for speech. I anticipate that's going to be coming though. You're right.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing else for special services, we can move on to curriculum, which was Terry and I. Terry, do you want to take it since you're more than welcome to?
You know what? You wrote up the notes for it and I remember looking at them, but I don't remember exactly what's in them.
That's okay. I actually don't want to steal your thunder if you have much to say. All right. So for curriculum, looking at the budget this year, a lot of it is pretty level. It's mostly you know, there's contractual increases for staff and things like that. As part of like PD going up this year and things like that. Currently, the main note I wanted to make, I think we currently have a responsive classroom trainer that we bring in every summer to train our staff because we have so many so much staff that we wanted to get trained. We can have up to 30 staff members attend each training. We shifted buildings. You know, the the line item is about the same, but we shifted which building they're going to be focusing on this year. Last summer, last year was supposed to be AMS. We're going back to Clark Wilkins because it is a slightly different, you know, training based on age level. But we are getting to the point where we probably have another year or two where we'll be bringing this trainer in and then we'll have most of our staff trained. And at that point, we'll be providing PD money for the, you know, stragglers that haven't done it yet. Because there are other trainings outside of that. The other option is if we kind of that last year where we still have a lot, but not too many. Christine, correct me if I'm wrong. This is just prior knowledge. We could actually open it up to other schools in the area to come in and then they would actually reimburse us for parts of part of the cost in the future, correct?
Responsive classroom doesn't love us to do that, but it is an option. And a lot of districts do that because they might have 10 teachers they want to train and it's much better to partner with another district and kind of share those 30 spots. Responsive classroom likes to tailor it to a specific school or district and work directly with that that one school or district. But that certainly is an option depending on numbers and we would definitely look at that. We'd still have to budget for the full cost if we did that in a future year, but we might be able to get some revenue back from that. So that it is an option to look at depending on numbers.
Yeah, but that would be more like once we're kind of almost done. Does Mont Vernon send their teachers to ours? And is there like a reimbursement process sort of ish?
Yeah, we just cut the invoice. So and we do it per teacher fee. So yes, Mont Vernon has joined us in the past. They have such a small staff. It ends up being, you know, two or three teachers, but still we'll have them pay their portion of the training. We basically divide it by 30 and then a portion it out. So I work with Katie on that each year. And again, like at AMS, we don't have as many teachers for that from Mont Vernon that would probably want to attend that. It really is more meant for, you know, a sixth, seventh, eighth kind of environment. That's our true middle school environment where Mont Vernon really is still more of an elementary environment, even though it includes that sixth grade.
Does anybody have any curriculum related questions? Tom?
Sorry. In terms of the curriculum aspect for teachers that were involved, and I can't remember the exact name of of what they were, but last year they they were not for the calendar year that ended FY20, there were positions where teachers were going to be helping with curriculum and we ended up not funding them last year. I want to say it's like a $2,000 stipend. Is that included in this in this budget here or is this somewhere is that somewhere else that we have? And I apologize for not knowing the specifics of it. I just thought of it now and I when you mentioned curriculum coordinator.
It's okay. Yeah. So they're called curriculum coordinators. We had removed half the cost in FY20. Moved the entire thing. So that it's not a specific dollar amount stipend. So it's not a $2,000 stipend. It is a percentage of their annual salary. Yeah, thank you. Their annual pay. So it it adjusts a little bit every year based on raises or, you know, steps increases and things like that. But they are in here. The role of the curriculum coordinator was adjusted last year, so during FY20, so the year that just ended. So the role changed, which into something that really, from what I'm understanding, is really helping the building administrators identify curriculum and thing, you know.
Where is that located in a budget? Is it in the school specific or is it under? I don't see it under curriculum. The moment I see is currently the curriculum coordinator itself.
That is. Yeah, it's curriculum coordinator salaries is that is the account. I could probably find it pretty quickly to give you the account number if you.
I have it. I see it here. I just didn't. It didn't say it's a curriculum coordinator salary. So it did not did not differentiate or indicate that there it was multiple. So I just clarifying that. It just to me, I really just one person.
Yeah. So it's just it just lists curriculum coordinator. It's stipend to support teacher leader positions. If you go over, I do have six budgeted at the contractual rate. So I have six for each school. And if we don't need, you know, we can determine how many we need. This year we have three at Clark Wilkins and that is, you know, early on working out fairly well. We made some adjustments to Clark Wilkins and what those roles, you know, which content areas they would cover. So it gives us flexibility. We're budgeting, you know, kind of the the same each year, that same number of coordinators, but we can certainly make adjustments depending on needs. But we at least have budgeted up to that amount. And I know the association has felt really strongly about those roles and that they're really pretty critical teacher leadership type roles and they they feel that they really help to provide support to administration, but also help to have that leadership role and that voice in our process and in our work.
Each one right now is budgeted for next year for FY22 at about 24,000 per school. So that's an average of 8,000 for three people. Or is that number? Does that number come in lower than that?
It's usually six people, right?
It's six people. It's $3,973 per person. Times six is the 23,838.
But right now you're only running three, you said for FY21.
Oh, currently, yes, sorry. So we only have we're we'll only expend half of that budget if you're at Clark Wilkins.
And that's at Clark Wilkins. I believe AMS has either all six or five.
Have five. I'm 99% sure it was five.
I think that's what I remember as well.
I would like to if and I don't know when we can make this decision, but if you say that this is working well, Christine, I would like to try this. And obviously with Anna's blessing as well, if it is working, I would like to keep it at that number for three going forward at least. You know, if we can cut another 12,000 off of that and I don't know what they need at AMS with four grades that are a little bit bigger than what you have at Clark Wilkins, but if we can get by with three on that and they can function in that job, considering we didn't use any in FY20, I would like to keep that number at three and bring that number down to 12,000 as opposed to 24,000.
We did end up using half of them in FY20.
Yeah, it was 9,000 as opposed to the budgeted 23,000.
Yeah, because we went without for part of the year. And I do know for administrators it was and especially Christine, it was extremely difficult going without any. But we ended up January, February. There were some changes made and we ended up bringing them back in. Anna, your three, what are their topics? Because I do know that the there's not a specialist one at Clark Wilkins this year, right?
So right now we have math ELA and then we have a tech integrator. Person working with with the teachers with that, which we're because we also this year, Gail Polio went back into the classroom. So.
Yeah, it is the integrated arts coordinator. But that integrated arts has always done some. So the reason why we've had six is we in some years we pulled integrated arts and technology out. In other years we haven't. So I guess we have someone that's sort of in that, you know, what has traditionally been more of that integrated arts combined with technology role. So we do have someone who actually just applied for that position. Because we we weren't able to fill it earlier this year. And the reason I budgeted for all of them was just because we weren't sure how this year was going to go with our, you know, last year we only had a partial year of the curriculum coordinators with their new revised job description. And most of that time was COVID and we were in remote learning. So you know, we felt like it was prudent for us to budget as we normally have in the past for all of the curriculum coordinators. And then to make that decision, you know, at the end of this school year, how did things go? And then determine what we would post for. So that was the only reason we did budget. Because we haven't had enough time for us to fully evaluate. But so far, things are going fairly well, but it is definitely still early in the school year.
Do you think you'll be able to make that evaluation after four months in December before we get to really even after we have until roughly February 1st and we'll have more than half a school year to make that judgment if having three is an adequate number, considering that we're going to have the majority of this time is going to be in person and who knows what's going to happen after the new year. So you think by the, you know, by January, you can make a judgment for next year if three is that magic number and we can reduce that from 24 to 12?
If if you're asking, I'm looking at Kathleen and I think we can give you that decision. Yes.
I do think we should make it by public hearing though. Because we shouldn't.
Either one, I just, you know, if we end up by December 20th, when we go out of when the break starts, I think that's just as fine as you know, January, you know, January 20th. So. I did not mean to cut you off.
Tom brought it up. So what's the representation at Clark when it comes to a curriculum coordinator position? They tend to be sort of, you know, an island where Wilkins, I think staffing wise is a bigger collection of humans. So what kind of support curriculum wise do they get at Clark?
So and I'll have Kathleen hop in. I mean, it's it's the same curriculum wise that they're getting. The curriculum coordinators are more helping support us, more helping support with some of the opportunities for PD and coaching. And certainly the curriculum coordinator positions are also open to Clark to apply for. So one of our curriculum coordinators for this year was kindergarten last year. So as we continue to talk about looping in the future, if it continues to stay that individual, then it would.
Oh, okay. So I was confused. I thought it was more of a support person for staff. Not that you're not staff, you are staff. But when I think of curriculum coordinator, I think of a team leader, right? Who's making sure everybody's consistent on the same page, adding new curriculum, et cetera.
That also Kathleen's Kathleen's muted or unmuted herself.
No, I would just add to what Anna said, you know, obviously the positions are open to all staff to apply. One of our curriculum coordinators in ELA was in a previous position as a reading specialist, working in all in, you know, both Clark and Wilkins previously previously. So that role kind of was present in both buildings on a daily basis. This year just looks a little different in our kind of pod COVID model. As far as ongoing curriculum support for Clark, I mean, obviously I do my best to split my time, you know, amongst the building. We're managing that schedule too and supporting teachers with, you know, collaborative team time and attending their meetings to help with those curriculum conversations and making sure they have the appropriate resources. And Christine and I, you know, in the past, I've attended every kindergarten team meeting that we've had. You know, throughout the monthly meeting process and I'm even scheduled to go back over to Clark for a couple of weeks and we'll be digging into the curriculum a little bit more with them then too.
So my comment would just be until we are one school. I'm worried about cutting that deeper. Because if you have three people and you're covering two schools, you know, that's a little challenging, even though it's five grades. So, you know, I'd like you guys to think about that. It's going to be quite a few years, even if we have a a vote in March for that situation. And I just want to make sure there's consistency and staffing for availability so that the kindergarten and even the preschool, you know, everybody is involved. So it's it's not so much that I think a Clark teacher wouldn't be qualified. I do. I'm just kind of saying, you know, how much attention are they getting from the curriculum coordinators? And, you know, does kindergarten need one? Or early childhood, the early childhood building, do they need a curriculum coordinator?
That's great feedback, Ellen. I think, you know, like Tom suggested, we should come back in the winter and talk more about the roles and how they've looked and, you know, in what ways do we need them to look in the future and get feedback from those currently in the role and additional teachers. I think the model that Anna has really put forth with teacher leadership has helped to provide some voice across the both buildings. And that has, you know, given us a platform to collect feedback, but then also provided other opportunities for teacher leaders. So I think we would, you know, bring this to them and then, you know, look to see if we need to make any changes moving forward. But I, you know, the idea of an early childhood coordinator, that would be something we could pursue, definitely.
I did want to point out to the board on the table of contents page, line 41 is the curriculum coordinator job description. They was last updated February 12th of 2020. Just so everybody can see it. Going over this as well. Any other curriculum related questions? Okay, that brings us to technology. And that was Ellen and Terry, I'm guessing. So.
Yeah. Do you want Terry, do you want me to go ahead or you want to do it?
Why don't you kick off and I will follow up?
Okay, so I provided everybody with a little write-up. So there was a technology budget increase of almost 25%. A large portion of the increase is for replacement laptop laptops at Wilkins. Clark students don't have laptops. They have iPads. So the replacement costs about 144K include replacement for students and staff. And the laptops were dispersed during spring remote learning. Many were damaged, came back with missing letters, et cetera. So the staff, Alex and his staff worked diligently over the summer to try to get a bunch of them fixed, but they are really, really short right now. Which I guess would be, you know, the fact that we're sharing laptops with families who need them would be a reason why. So the future plans include fifth grade families in terms of AMS paying for a laptop similar to what they're doing at Sohegan. So Alex did put together a plan that Adam has in his hands and. So Alex did put together a plan that Adam has in his hands and probably all administration. So that there is not, so there's more consistency year to year in terms of replacement instead of one big slam, which seems to be happening this year. Terry, do you want to add to that?
Yeah, I want to add that I think that it's become really obvious that technology, I know that I've been on this subcommittee for several years. And it seems that whenever we go to tighten our belts, this is one of the places where we tighten. And we say, you know, the technology is nice to have, not have to have. I think that in the last year, we've realized that technology has become more of a have to have. And we have uncertain times we're still in and ahead of us. So I think that, like we've tried to do in many other areas, actually making a plan and then sticking to it makes sense. And having a real cycle of replenishment and repair and replacement so that we don't say, oh, well, okay, we'll just skip it this year. But then we'll catch up next year, because that's where we're going up and down and it just isn't, it's not a great way to do things. So I think that we had, by design, had fewer devices in the lower grades. I think that we are kind of filling in a little bit there, just because we've had to send so many home and make them available, even in class, when they've been interacting with kids off campus as well. So I think we're reaping a little bit of what we sowed here, but that we're not too far off from where we need to be. And I think we need to be committed to keeping technology consistent. I think it serves us in the long run. And we did ask that if there's any way that we can take some of the extra funds that we're getting to maybe help offset just a little bit. To help this final catch up of some of the original devices we have, making sure they get more consistent. We did talk a little bit about, like Chromebooks are something that's cheap and easy, but they're not always a great choice, especially in a remote environment. And I had never even thought about, Christine brought up the fact that teachers, if they have multiple types of devices in the same room, they're now wasting time trying to figure out how any simple activity is a little different depending on what device you're on. And they're not IT experts and neither should we ask them to be. So just having one or two types of devices they need to get familiar with keeps them focused and keeps everything moving forward. And so it makes a lot of sense to me that we really try to be consistent where we can and that we get a handle on this and keep a handle on this.
Tom.
So do we have an exact number of how many laptops we're talking about here? What's being purchased for teachers and then what's being purchased for students?
Yeah.
We do, and I don't know if we had put Alex's plan, I know Bethany, you had the link to that, you were able to, I think you shared it in your Google Drive and shared it out.
It's in the table of, it's in the table of contents in the budget file.
Yeah, okay. I couldn't remember if that got in. I know that was a late addition that we took a little while to get. So, and one thing I did want to share, which I know was Ellen had shared, that it was really helpful. We want to be really careful about our youngest learners and technology. We want the technology there and available. But we don't need or want a one-to-one laptop in first grade or second grade. And we don't want the, you know, we want to be careful about screen time and we want to make sure that students have access to technology and to the resources they need. To really add to and enrich the curriculum and it not to be the main thing that they do or that they're on all day. Certainly with remote learning, we have to utilize them even more fully than we typically do, but we just want to be really clear that that's not our goal. We're in really almost a crisis, and I'm not exaggerating using that word, at Clark Wilkins. We have so few computers and the computers we have are so old and breaking all the time. We barely have enough computers to do NWEA testing or New Hampshire SAS testing. We had to take every single computer away from pretty much, I think, every teacher in classroom to do NWEA testing. And then when we finished with that, we were able to disperse them back out. And you can imagine the amount of time that our tech staff has to spend doing that. And the lack of resources that we have when that happens. So we just want to make sure that we have computers available for students, certainly if we go to remote learning. Right now, we're not sure that where our numbers even stand with remote learning and being able to adequately provide laptops to students. And we're working really hard to fill in that gap right now. But even getting laptops, it's a challenge, because production stopped for a period of time with laptops. And it's been a challenge even with shipping and so on to be able to get them in time. So we're really, most of our laptops are five years old. And for an inexpensive laptop, that's like a $200 to $300 laptop, five years old is well beyond its, it's a typical life cycle for a laptop. So we're in a pretty tough position, especially at Clark Wilkins. We've been able to manage a little bit better, because we were closer to one-to-one at AMS. But we also got a significant number of laptops damaged. And we're kind of, when I'm saying we're duct taping things together with laptops, we are duct taping things together. We have external microphones and headsets and so on, because the microphone is broken or the speaker is broken on the laptops. So we're in a pretty tough situation. I think we're, I mean, we're looking at between like 175 to 200 laptops per school, I believe. I'd have to go back to budget submissions to confirm, but off the top of my head, that's the request just to put us in line with our plan moving forward. One other important thing that we spoke about is, this was Alex's idea that he had shared, that he would like to do the same thing we do. And I think just mentioned briefly, that we do at the high school. So when kids enter AMS in fifth grade, they would pay a portion of that laptop fee, just as, you know, the cost of the laptop, just as they do at the high school. That becomes their laptop and that follows them for the next four years. So it would help to offset the cost of laptops, and that's something that the board can talk about. We could make that decision to institute that next year and really look at what the high school is doing and how that works. But Bethany, I don't know if you wanted to speak more to that?
Yeah, that would be our intent. Any laptops we're able to get this year, we're hoping to kind of fill the hole of laptops that are failing pretty regularly on us right now. We're swapping out laptops daily in the office for a new laptop to swap out again. So it really is piecemealing things together. So anything we're able to purchase this year, we would start by, by filling in those, those areas where the computers are failing the greatest. Then going into next year, our hope would be to really start this levelized funding for the budget and continue to roll the devices up with students. So that we're not having these fluctuations in the technology line.
And I, I think Christine, Bethany, I think it was 50,000, around $50,000 a year that we're hoping to kind of, if no, no words anymore, sorry. Level out the budget, I think it was about $50,000 a year. Was that both schools or was that just at Clark, or just at AMS?
I think that was just AMS written up in the technology plan. I think they intended to do it for both schools, but I think that that, that specific amount with reference in the technology plan referred just to AMS.
The technology plan says 230,000 would be the total laptop investment cost between the two schools.
But, so there are, I think there's a couple of different plans outlined in that one, and I believe that was the one to do everything all at once. Which was, I think, I think Alex presented three options, like you can do, you can fix all the technology problems all at once and here's what it will cost. We could fix it one year at a time, here's what it will cost, or we can buy the external microphones, et cetera, and here's the cost.
There, there is a document in the Table of Contents called Budget Summary of Changes by Object. And if you go to that document toward the end of it, it gives a summary of the cost items that were budgeted in like the technology equipment lines. So you can see those items grouped in that document.
So I actually did the, to go back to Tom's real specific initial question about how many are we talking about here? I went to the account lookup. We're looking at replacing 75 student, so this is specific to Clark Wilkins. 75 student laptops, 15 staff laptops, two building computers. 10 of the iPads over at Clark for kindergarten. And that is like the replacement equipment. That was just Clark, because that, or Clark Wilkins, because that's more specifically to what your question was. And then the other item, there is additionally a, a new equipment technology line, Clark Wilkins, that is. Adds some, I was just going to pull that up again, hold on a second. So that is. Additional laptops needed to kind of replace those. So it's kind of.
No, it's minus five.
Bethany, can.
I got her. So that's just some additional laptops needed. So yeah, what is, what is the difference between the new equipment line item and the replacement equipment?
So one thing I had also shared with our technology subcommittee is that Alex was not able to do this technology budget. So I did the technology budget. Michelle and I worked together. We rolled all of the lines over from last year's budget, which Bruce had actually budgeted. So we rolled all of those over and then I made adjustments where we needed to. I would have, so in the past, what Bruce would do is a replacement laptop line would be to replace anything that's broken or has aged out of our inventory. And then that new equipment was any, you know, new laptops above and beyond what we currently have as inventory. Those line, those different accounts probably got a little blurred this year in just, you know, trying to make sure that we had enough laptops. I'd have to go back to Alex's plan and also try to get a really good inventory, which is something without Alex being available to support us. You know, what we, we need to kind of revisit and really check in, because we've done so many swap outs and changes, even over the past few months. We really need to revisit what that is. So right now, it's a little bit more of an artificial separation, just because I don't have a really great inventory at this point. But it's, you know, we were really, we looked at the overall numbers, how many laptops do we need to be able to function? And, and really get on a good replacement cycle, because the problem is right now, our laptops are so old. We, if we keep trying to Band-Aid, we're going to get to a point where we have almost no laptops left. So we kind of have to fill in now and then we'll get on a really good replacement cycle, as Ellen mentioned, where that number will be a lot smaller each year. You're just kind of that, that four or five-year-old laptop, that's all we're replacing and you're not buying lots of new.
Right, okay. All right, so is there any other questions regarding technology?
Do we need to decide now which of the plans we want to go with?
Well, so it's a little tricky. So Alex did this early in the summer. And part of this was, with these three different plans, was to impact this school year. And one of the challenges is that we can't even get laptops now. I know that Bethany and Anna and Kathleen, we were working on trying to get some laptops. We might have an update. We had a little bit of budget funding in those laptop lines to be able to purchase some for this year. So I don't know, Anna, do you know if we were able to even place an order? I didn't check in with Brian yet.
Yes, I think we were able to put in an order for, and Kathleen, I don't know what we got for the timeline for when they could be delivered.
A few months, I think.
Yeah, we were looking at January. Yeah, we placed the order not too long ago, and they said January, but Brian basically said that based on his experience with an order pending for South Heagan, that January could be pushed back a little bit. I guess they've had experience with vendors telling them, oh, they'll be here then, and then it's taken a little bit longer.
And then there needs to be some time factor in to deploy them, to make them ready for use and.
Yeah.
And we have a batch coming as well, that I think is tenderly slated for the end of December, but I expect it will be something similar to Clark Wilkins. And that will help us replace the ones that are failing right now.
Yeah, and, you know, I think that we would probably need to do a re-inventory and then a check on what we've been able to actually secure this year. To then really finalize what our numbers, we put in what we believe we need for next year. There might be, you know, some, some room there, but I think we're actually pretty conservative with the, the number of laptops we chose for next year. Because we knew how much of a change that was from previous years. But we're happy to, you know, relook at things with where we are with our inventory and what we were able to order and to come up with a clearer plan too.
I would really suggest that, because while I'm extremely committed to being, to being right-sized on our technology and having our teachers functional and having, you know, enough on hand, that we're not doing a daily scramble. I do think it would make sense to go, okay, where are we now? So let's get a real number and a real plan. And I'm really interested in that plan for getting one at fifth grade and keeping it through middle. Because I think that we were really trying to figure out, do we even want to be one-to-one at the eighth grade? Okay, that went well. Seventh grade, that went well, and we, we've taken a phased approach, which I think was correct. And I think we're at a point now that we could feel comfortable having fifth graders have one assigned, that maybe they don't take home, maybe they leave at school. I think that was a discussion along the way that we've had, that they maybe don't have to go each classroom like they do now, that you're number one, you're number two. But you don't take it home so that there isn't that extra security factor of, although a lot of that, again, we've learned a lot this year, when everybody's had to be home.
I, I do know, Terry, they actually had that last year, where there was, it was technically one-to-one, where two kids shared a laptop in Core. But like, so like Suzie and Johnny both had laptop one in STEM, but obviously they didn't have it at the same time, they just switched. So we've actually had a one-to-one concept down to fifth grade already for the last year and this year.
No, I do think that we, we've done a good job in figuring out how it makes sense and it doesn't distract from learning at the middle school. So I think now that we, you're feeling comfortable with that, I absolutely feel like it makes a lot of sense to, to look at the South Heagan model and try to, and try to learn from that and offset our cost a little bit. I think it makes sense.
Agreed, agreed. And, and I would just say that we are in such a deficit of functional laptops that are not causing frustration with students. That anything we get this year will be great, but I, I can't imagine that it will impact the numbers of what we will need next year. Because it is a phased plan over the next several years, it's not like we're buying everything we need next year for the whole middle school.
That makes sense. So I think that really all we need to close in on is just confirming our inventory. I think it still needs to happen, so.
Absolutely.
In this discussion, and then really taking a look at, at which, being clear about which plan we went with. And then I do think that as a board, we would have to buy in and vote on moving to a plan where we would ask for shared cost with families. That's something that you can recommend, but that we have to approve, I believe.
I believe you do need to approve that.
I was actually, that was going to my next question, Terry.
Yeah, we might not approve it right now. It may need to be a formal thing that we put into a meeting, but let's get it on the agenda sooner than later, I think. Because that one, we will have to open up to public comment. People will have opinions.
Yeah, and I think, but I think it's also something that we can do as part of this budget cycle over the next couple of months, so.
So if, if I'm making a formal request that we put that on the agenda soon and that we actually vote on it, because I think it's a great idea.
So I, I think what we should do is have a, like, formal presentation on it. So they, it kind of introduces the topic and then we can actually, you know, add an actual, like, meeting, meeting, not a workshop. And then we can vote on it, you know, discuss it a little bit and then discuss and vote on it at a different, at a second meeting. We also need to think about what this means for Mont Vernon students.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Alex had that as part of his plan. He actually thought it would be really helpful to do the same thing at Mont Vernon, that I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, that, and Bethany, you might be able to jump in. I think they were going to have them in fifth grade in Mont Vernon, is that right?
Yes, the, the question will be whether, when students come as seventh graders, there's, there's a, there's a simple plan and there's a plan that I like better. there's, there's a, there's a simple plan and there's a plan that I like better. There's, um, because it's two separate school districts. One idea would be that they get them in fifth grade at Mont Vernon and that same plan, they follow the computers through to eighth grade. That feels like the most equitable plan. I don't know from a crossing districts plan how simple that is. The other solution would be to increase and give them a laptop in seventh grade, but we wouldn't want it just to be a two-year laptop. So we'd have to be creative as to whether those get recycled back down to seventh grade again, or if those become loners or what we do with those computers. We'll have to, we'll have to think carefully about that, um, so that it feels welcoming and equitable across the board.
We should research the, um, transfer of technology district to district, um, as part of that presentation.
And it might be that, um, and Michelle, you could probably jump in that, um, a portion was already paid by the families, which they would have need to, was needed to have assumed that portion, whether they were in the Mont Vernon School District or the Amherst School District. So the portion that Mont Vernon paid, if the life cycle of that laptop is four years, Mont Vernon paid the full portion, you know, what does that, that mean for the rest of that, that time? Almost like a lease, you know, and, and what, what is Amherst responsible for, for those two years? Michelle, I don't know if you know anything off the top of your head on that.
I, I don't off the top of my head, but it's definitely something that we would want to iron out and be clearer regarding a plan.
Yeah. And I don't know if the tuition agreement, um, I've actually never deeply read the Mont Vernon tuition agreement with, uh, Amherst. Um, and I know you guys are negotiating now. I don't know, um, how detailed that agreement is and what's provided by Mont Vernon versus what's provided by Amherst. And if that would come into play at all, you know, if, would the tuition agreement require the Mont Vernon School District to provide the computer, but the Amherst School District provides the resource for upkeep, support and software costs? For example, um, then we actually wouldn't have to worry about that. And that if that laptop broke and couldn't be fixed, then the Mont Vernon School District would actually have to buy that student their laptop. I, I don't know if it makes sense to be looking at that, um, agreement, or if it makes sense to look at some sort of transfer of ownership of the computers, but I, we can look into those details.
Yeah, there's.
Makes sense as a writer, maybe. That's a specific technology writer.
Right.
We can take a look at that as part of the tuition agreement as well to see if something needs to be included in there. Okay. Any other technology questions? Okay, so that ends our budget specific topics. Now we get to have a, um, little bit of a discussion about JFAK. Ellen, I did mention, um, and I'll just say it again for everybody, that the, um, JFAK is coming to our meeting on Monday to have a little bit more of a, uh, Amherst specific discussion. Granted, you know, a lot of it is Amherst specific anyway, but, um, to go into a little bit more detail about, um, the costs, the, um, bond, you know, the actual like bond price, um, the pay schedule for a bond, all of that, um, bit of information as well as, you know, I know that we've all been asking some questions on the spreadsheet that I sent out. But tonight we can also, if needed, ask if, you know, identify a few more things that we want to make sure are talked about. And then, so we can have a little bit of a discussion now about the, you know, proposed, about the proposal, um, that they gave us last week. And then, um, they'll present more on Monday. We can talk, yeah, we'll be able to ask them more questions, um, as well. And then, um, we will also have another kind of final discussion about it on our November, I want to say 16th, but I'm not completely sure. Hold on. The, um, our last budget workshop, which is, wow, I think I was actually right, November 16th, which is our Ways and Means and, um, Amherst, uh, and the School Board Joint, um, Budget Workshop, to kind of iron out the last details and things like that. So, does anybody want to get started? Ellen?
Well, I, um, I have just been thinking about class sizes and I was not on the board when, um, the process, when, I, I don't really know when it happened, the process that the board went through to determine the appropriate class sizes for the grades. But we have been basing so many decisions upon that, um, idea. And so I think as a board, we should kind of revisit it. You know, there's a couple of different board members. And Beth, you can help me. I don't know when those were established. I knew you and I and Amy went back and forth and you were like, I think she was on the board. So was it that long ago?
I don't know, Terry, were you on the board when it was either your first year or my first year?
So on the class size document, I have the date it had consensus approval from the board. Um, so I try to pull that.
I think it was my first year. They, we had never formally made recommendations. We had always kind of said, oh, we want to keep them low, but it wasn't ever formalized. So I think my first year was when we finally said, listen, here are actual numbers around that.
It was spring of 2018.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. So pretty recently. Okay. So I think, um, I, I would love to have a conversation with everybody. I know, Beth, you're like, is that recently?
How to figure out when actually that was?
Where are we? Um, so I would love to just kind of, um, spend some time revisiting that. You know, where JFAK had studied this based upon, and, uh, LaValley Brenzinger took those numbers and specifically created a certain number of classrooms. So I think it's really valuable for, again, for me, I can speak for myself and maybe for Josh and Tom, who were not on the board at the time when the discussions really ensued. Because we're making really important decisions based upon those numbers.
So back then we were given a full presentation, um, about what the proposed numbers were, why, you know, the highs, the lows, the target, um, and then the why and the research behind it. So there was, um, it was called the STAR report. Um, it was a, uh, four-year study out of Tennessee. Christine.
Oh, I remember this. Yeah.
Christine, correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, which I probably will be. My brain was refreshed recently because of the question that JFAK asked. They did a, you know, they did a study. They, um, tracked the, um, benefits, um, and the educational impact of students on various class sizes and, um, and at the various, uh, age levels. Which ones were more important to have smaller ones and which ones are more important to have, um, or could get away with larger class sizes? Using that information, we, um, and it was, it was a, it was a good study. Using that information, we set our class sizes, uh, you know, our class size goals based on that. And in very few cases have met it on a regular basis.
Yeah, no, I know that. So one of the things that I'm struggling with is, um, when it comes to JFAK and the new building potentially that we are looking at on the Wilkins site. There's nine classrooms, um, designated for each grade. And I'm not sure anybody here has ever seen nine classrooms of a grade. But I know that's to get the numbers smaller, but you know, that additional square footage is a lot of money. So I just, you know, I just wanted to start the conversation. And then we've had feedback from the kindergarten teachers saying a paraprofessional in their classroom is more important to them than 15. They'd rather be a 20. So I, I wonder, you know, did we really, Christine, maybe you can answer this, was staff a big part of that conversation? In terms of, you know, boots on the ground, experience and studies are valuable, but in our district specifically with the support staff we have or the lack of support staff we have, what kind of staffing survey or information came from them?
So, um, they, uh, some of the, uh, we actually had a lot of teachers at the school board meeting where we discussed it and they shared out from their perspective, um, some of the challenges they faced with the larger class sizes, because our class sizes were creeping up and creeping up and creeping up. And it was, um, a big challenge. And teachers, um, uh, really talked about the implications and what class sizes, um, you know, they felt were manageable and worked for them. Um, a little bit of the history for how that document, um, was developed. We first looked at the DOE minimum standards, which we thought was an important piece. But again, that's a minimum expectation and we knew that that wasn't necessarily our goal. We then looked at, um, policies from across the state and looked at, uh, you know, many, many districts actually put this in policy. It's not just a consensus approval document like we did. Other districts actually have it as a policy that they have to adhere to when they create their class sizes. So with that, um, we actually looked at, um, many different districts across the state and what their class sizes were in those policies and really helped us to determine where we felt we should, where that should fall. And I think we had two or three, or maybe even four iterations of this document where we were tweaking and talking with teachers and with building leadership and, uh, really looking at, you know, what class size makes the most sense. You don't want it so small that we're, um, that, you know, we don't have space. It's not efficient, um, and that we, we, uh, don't have that right learning environment, but we also didn't want it so big that teachers didn't feel that they could provide individualized and small group support to students that was meaningful. So that's really what we wrestled with. And that was one of the reasons why we had that low goal and high. Because we felt like when we had a goal, it's like, well, how far can you stray from the goal? So we felt like that, that low and that high really helped to inform where we were trying to, to be and to fall within that continuum. And the other discussion, which I know we've shared often, is that kindergarten feels very strongly about one-to-one paras. And the reason, um, is not even instructionally, yes, instructionally, there are huge support in the classroom. But it's for all those other tasks. It's for when the kids come in and they're in their snow boots and their snow pants and they have to take all of that off and, and get ready for the day. It's getting to lunch and getting to recess and getting back in the classroom and, um, just a lot of those procedural pieces that, that need to happen, um, in a kindergarten classroom and, and all those things kids need support with. So our teachers in the, there was one year where we, um, went from three sections, because we were half day to three and a half sections, and we had to have shared paras. And teachers spoke about how every time they turned around, the exact time they needed their para was when the, the power, para was in that other room. So part of this document, you know, many other districts have smaller class sizes for kindergarten than what we had outlined here. We had outlined, um, you know, slightly larger class sizes because the feedback from our kindergarten teachers was, please don't, like, I don't care if I'm a little bit bigger, please don't take that para away. They're so critical, um, to the functioning at so many different points during the day. It's really difficult to have a shared para. If that para was only in there to provide some instructional support during reading or during math, um, that's a very different model and that's easy to share a para. But when that para needs to be in there, um, to help with snow pants and lunch and recess, it's really hard to share because those critical times are the same critical times across all of the, the schools. So those were really our conversations, you know, talking with teachers and, and what's working and what's not, and really looking at, um, numbers across our state and policies across our state.
So obviously we're basing the nine classrooms that LaValley Brenzinger brought forth are based upon the forecasted numbers and then the ideal class size.
So I wasn't part of the JFAK work?
Yeah. Sorry, it wasn't a question. It did sound like a question. This stating is a fact.
Okay. And I was like, well, that's what I took from the presentation. So I think, yes, Ellen, are you on JFAK?
I am.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, so yes, and it was, you know, um, they've mentioned frequently that that's what they based it all on. So it's important for everybody to know that because that was difficult for me to swallow. I was like, nine classrooms. But again, of course, I would like that ninth classroom to be a playroom that every grade, our class visits on a daily basis. But, um, so it's important to get our heads around that. Tom was also on JFAK. I am, just if I can just go, uh, on my, I'll stand on my soapbox for another minute. I'm really struggling with the big number and doing the middle school and the elementary school at the same time. We did vote on it as a, as a group, um, but I, I will say at the time, I felt a little snowballed by it a little bit. I think generally, you know, I know we have problems in every single building. I, that's, you know, nobody's denying that. Um, but I think collectively we've agreed that Wilkins is the real, Clark Wilkins is the real issue. And by doing the rebuild there, it benefits the middle school because it gets fifth grade out. Um, I'm having a really hard time with a hundred million dollars.
I agree with you, Ellen. And, and I think that, I think that it's, and then obviously this is, you and I didn't vote against it in the JFAK meeting to present it to the boards. But I feel like on a board level here that we can, by, by solving Wilkins, by bringing that forward first, that gives us, um, a built-in solution, not a permanent solution, don't get me wrong, but it gives us a built-in solution for AMS, because we can, all of a sudden, once Clark Wilkins is done, you remove a grade from AMS, you naturally open up space. And yes, it's not ideally, you'll still have some things that aren't ideal, but I think that you can take a sort of Band-Aid approach that they're doing over at, that they've proposed at South Heagan, where you fix certain things. You fix removable walls, replace lockers or whatnot, things that can carry over into a renovated building. And then you can sort of space out that instead of a 10-year project timeline, it's maybe a 15-year project timeline where you have Clark Wilkins, AMS, and then South Heagan, or maybe AMS and South Heagan overlap a little shorter than five years. But I, I have a hard time, especially now, um, and with the results looking like they are. I think we're going to have some people in this town looking at tax increases, uh, in, in potentially in the future as well. Plus pandemic, plus a lot of this other stuff. I think that there are a lot of factors that are going in to make a hundred million dollars an automatic note for a lot of people.
I agree. And I will say, you know, it's, if you relate it, as we all try to do this, right, related back to our own homes. I think that, um, when we move the fifth graders into a new house, I think we need to live in the old house and see how it works for a little while before, um, it's renovated. So when the fifth grade is removed and the administrators at the middle school can give feedback, okay, this is how it feels now. And, and maybe the priorities change a little bit. Um, LaValley Brenzinger brought forth a beautiful, um, renovation. But I, I will say that, you know, for me, it's not the political culture. It's really the, you know, COVID and what people are dealing with in that, in that lane.
I, I include that as part of what, what I was talking about, Ellen. It's, it's all those factors and there wasn't just. I apologize for making it seem like that.
Yeah. And I, I, I think it's important, you know, we, we certainly want to get a budget passed. And I think it would, I'm just going to say it, it would be irresponsible to, um, request a budget with the main increase, at least the increase we're looking at, which I think is around six percent now and a hundred million dollar bond. I think that's a big ask.
So I agree, it is a big ask. I, I guess my concern is what I, what I saw from, and, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong here, but the AMS renovation was not significantly more expensive than if we just continue to maintain that building. Like the AMS renovation was something like 32 million. Just continuing to keep that house up and running was like 30 million. So to me, that is not, like, to me, that was the easy thing to do AMS. That, that, that was not, because the, the cost difference wasn't that large, that seemed like a layup. Um, and that seemed like an easier.
I think it's just the timing. Uh, there was definitely some hope and there wasn't anything definitive about getting to bundle some of the costs because we were doing two projects at the same time. But again, not really definitive savings, but it was, oh yeah, you know. I think it's doing them at the same time. I, I'm not saying that, that, um, that renovation at AMS wasn't well put forth. Um, my problem is doing them both at the same time on one vote, on one warrant article. I just don't, I don't think it'll pass.
Well, it, it may not. I, I don't know, right? I, I don't know how to predict these things necessarily. But to me, that's the easier sell is the AMS renovation, because you can sell, that you're selling that as, it's not much more expensive than this is like, we can either keep the used car and we're going to pay in the next 10 years, we're going to pay $50,000 to just maintain the used car, or we can get a new car for $50,000 and it's the same cost. So I agree with you, but my concern is that is the easier sell is AMS than, than the Wilkins changes.
We can't do AMS without getting the fifth grade down to Wilkins.
It's, it's a better sell, but it's not the bigger need.
Oh, I, I get it, but that's why I would say, I get that you have to do one to do the other, but that's why. It, to me, it doesn't make sense. Like, I get that it's a big number and it decreases the number, but I, I don't, I don't get not doing the package when the money difference is not like, it's not that more significant than just leaving, than just having to maintain AMS.
Yeah, but it's not 30 million at one shot to maintain AMS. It's 30 million over a 20-year period. Now granted, we're going to have a bond over that same period of time, but you can, you know, you don't necessarily, you're not guaranteed to spend that 30 million maintaining that school. If the heat and air system continues to work, you don't replace it just because it says it's year 10 and you have to replace it. You say, all right, well, you know what? It's going to work for another year. You say, all right, well, you know what, it's going to work for another year. Just like a, a car, when your five-year payment period is over, you don't replace it because the payment period is done. You drive it until you, you know, you have the money to get a new one, or you drive it until it needs to be replaced. So I think, you know, you can, you can still use some of the capital reserve fund to be able to work on some of the projects at AMS. Because we're still going to be asking to fund that as well. So that's another six hundred thousand every year on top of a hundred million dollar project. On top of a six percent increase, which goes in a whole different thing, but I still think we need to work, do some work on getting that number to come down if possible. So there's, there's a lot of asks and we saw this two years ago with significantly, I mean, infinitesimally smaller numbers. And we ended up in a default budget. So I can't even imagine, you know, we'll be laughed off the face of the earth if we go, yeah, it's a hundred million. Oh yeah, let's add eight percent to the budget. And, and let's get, you know, another six hundred thousand for the CRF. It's a very bad time to bring that forward.
I'm gonna hold on a second. I'm gonna hold on, I'm gonna hold you guys, because Terry did raise her hand. I, but before I do your talks, I also want to give Anna and Bethany, if you guys want to go, you can. So, just so you guys know. So yeah, so you guys can go if you want to. If you guys want to stick around and listen to this, that's fine too. But this will be our discussion for the rest of the night. Terry, go ahead.
So I have a couple of questions. First, after the last JFA presentation at SAU, I thought that we needed more time to fine tune and we weren't looking at a warrant article this spring, but it would be the following year.
Nope. For March.
Okay, they did fine tune from a hundred and, from seventy million for Wilkins and for forty million for AMS down to sixty-six and thirty-four. So that is the fine tune number from what they originally came at us with, as kind of the ballpark figure. And then they came with the ballpark figure, then Roger went through with facilities and with La Valley Brenzinger. And they brought it down even further to the numbers that we saw at SAU on the twenty-ninth.
Okay, so I want to just understand that better. Thank you. Second, I hear what you're saying. And I don't disagree on AMS. My thought is this, so long as we make it really clear that we need to keep funding the capital fund. And we kind of go with the understanding that most of that, if not all, is going to be towards AMS. Could we not structure our projects so that we can still take advantage of the work that's been done and the suggestions that have been made? And say, okay, we know that it, you know, year or whatever, we can do this portion of it. So we're going to lose some savings in being able to do it at once. But we can't do it at once anyway, because we can't do the stuff there until we move the kids out of the way and have them over, like until the other building is ready.
Now, they actually have a plan for that. They really can.
It's a plan that we already were working on. It's the plan that we, we talked about in the budget presentations last year, that we need six hundred thousand over the next twenty, twenty years to be able to save up money allocated between the three schools in Amherst, including South Heagan in that group. To be able to allocate that money to, to cover the, the needs. You know, we don't have anything until FY twenty-four where there's a million dollar ask. But by then we'll have a million dollar saved up. But in the meantime, you're going to take out all of your needs for Clark Wilkins in there, except for emergencies. And, you know, that certainly can all go towards AMS.
Yeah, I think if we had a really clear plan and I, and I, and I hear, I hear what Josh is saying. And I do see the case for let's be clean, let's do it the cheapest way possible. Let's just be making, you know, payments to one thing and it's all connected. But I feel like being able to decouple and go, okay, because they are two very different projects anyway. They, the bottom line, they're the same, but they're two very different projects. And so we had a lot of success in, in saying, hey, we want to even out your impact. And we're just finishing paying off the last warrant article for AMS, we've already discussed. So to immediately turn around and go, okay, and I hear there's a new warrant article for them. I think it might be more palatable to, to, to keep going forward with what voters have already agreed to. And continuing to go, okay, how can we structure these projects in a way that takes advantage of this more information that we have? And maybe a little better plan for what to do with some of this. And if we have any extra money along the way, we can do what South Heagan is doing and saying, okay, what chunk can we take from that? If we're able to do things sooner. I, I am very interested in having a more specific detailed plan on how that might work with this extra information that we now have. Because originally we were just going off of the one 10-year capital needs plan or 20-year plan. Now that we have a little, we have some suggestions as well, maybe marry the two together and say, do we need to raise that amount at all? What, what break points might we find? And is there anything that needs to be done sooner than later?
Tom, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, I just think it would just to reiterate the point that, you know, Brian Coogan had presented in the JFA meeting. Part of the desire to do this at the same time is the cost savings you get from, you know, one project manager overseeing everything. It's, you know, and buying more steel at, you know, than you would normally, maybe get a better rate, et cetera. All that stuff that is way above my pay grade. But I think that the, the other thing is that it's a good time to borrow. And it probably will be for another year. But I don't imagine that it's going to last much longer than that. I mean, we looked at, now I have the numbers off the top of my head, but Lance presented numbers on, on what a project what it cost us 10 years ago, five years later, and then what it costs today, and what it'll cost again in five years. I just don't know that that's going, I, I think, I don't know if that's going to justify spending a hundred million now, so.
So that is, and, and I'm not making myself clear because I'm exhausted, but that is the point I'm trying to make. Where the JFA plan that was presented is phenomenal. And if it was not a COVID year, right, and we didn't have a situation in our community, in the world, wherever, that, you know, people are, are struggling to vote yes on a six-point, six-point-three or whatever increased budget. My fear is that we put this out there so big, right? It, it gets voted down because the current situation we're in. Timing is horrible. It's unfortunate, but Tom's right. If we put this off, so Terry, if we get this voted in in March, we're not going to get a new school at Wilkins for five years. That's how long it's going to take.
Oh, no, I know. I, I was.
Yeah, so, so that's, you know, time is of the essence in that way. As Tom, as Tom said, the interest rates are phenomenal. So my fear, and I think the responsible conversation we have to have is what do we want to present to the taxpayer? We know what's, we know what we all want. I know what I want. Yes, absolutely. Let's get both buildings done. But what do we want to present to the taxpayer in terms of responsibility? I'm struggling with that. And I, I, I was struggling from the moment La Valley Brenzinger put those numbers down. I was like, no, not now, right? This is so much money.
Okay, Josh, your hand is raised.
Yeah, so I guess I just, and I hear all this and I get it. I, I feel like our job is, as the board, is not to make the decision for the taxpayers whether they're put this forward, but it's to put it forward and let them make the call. Because at the end of the day, Tom's points are right. We have great rates right now. We can save money by doing this at the same time. And if we, you know, I don't care if we get laughed at. You know, I get laughed at all the time. So that's not the point for me. It's, it's, we have, we are being offered what the experts are saying is the best plan. And to me, I feel like we need to present that plan to the public. I thought that there was consensus around generally agreeing with this process. If that's not, we obviously, I think, need to work that out and, and hear that out. But I think it would be irresponsible not to bring it forward and let the taxpayers choose. And if they choose, they say no. Okay, then we either go back to the drawing board or we present the same thing next year. And I get that the concern is that they're going to throw out, you know, end up throwing out the baby with the bathwater here and that we, by putting this forward, do we risk other things? Do we risk a default budget? Do we risk, you know, other things being voted down? I think it's our job to communicate clearly, these are separate issues that you have to make choices on. And, and we are, you know, we have to present to the public, you know, our budget and, and this big project. They are two separate things. You can choose to vote on one and not the other, but we are presenting it to you because of these reasons. That we have lower interest rates right now, because we have save, cost savings for you, the public, long-term by doing it right now together. We're coupling this together for a reason. And I, I would be, you know, I think a, as a taxpayer, I want to make that decision. And I want to be presented with the option to make that decision. And I feel like if we take that away, we're doing it, we're doing it for the right reasons, but it's also the wrong choice. That, you know, it may not pass, but lots of things may not pass. We have no idea. And, and so I think if this is the best option, then we should present the best option to the public, whether or not, they, then they get to choose whether they vote on it.
I think that's what we need to decide, Josh. Is it the best option?
Okay, Tom, you also have your right, hand raised?
It's for me, for.
Okay, so I'll over that. Okay. So to see, Josh, you just spoke. Tom, you said, Terry, let's give you an opportunity. Just.
So I guess I'm confused. Because on the one hand, you say it's going to be thirty thousand one way, thirty-two the other. But then you say, no, there's a huge cost savings in doing it together. So I don't understand which it is.
No, it's, this is the combination of doing separate construction projects, Terry. It's all the ancillary things like a, a project manager. If you're hiring one project manager, I don't know if that's one of the, the line items that specifically mentioned. You can have this considered one project. So you have one person overseeing AMS and Clark Wilkins. If you do AMS by itself, you're going to pay a project manager. And then five years later, you're going to pay a project manager to do Clark Wilkins. So those are the types of things that you're going to save money on. Because you can share the, the cost between the two projects. Where separately, you have that discussion, do we maintain AMS for the next 10 years at thirty million dollars? Or do we renovate it now for thirty-four million dollars? That's the difference where the, that's where it's, it's a wash almost in terms of maintaining versus.
But in the maintaining, would we get any improvements at all? Can we, can we kind of, if we go to keep something functional, can we upgrade it a little? Or are we?
Yeah, I think that's.
Exactly as.
You replace your HVAC system, you're getting a new HVAC system. You're not just, you know, tweaking it for a hundred thousand a year. You're going to spend six million in twenty-twenty-eight on the new HVAC system, whatever the timeline we had. I don't have it to tip my fingers here, but whatever that timeline is, you're going to replace the new HVAC. You're going to replace the lights and the ceiling tiles that come with it at that same time. So that's what, you know, we mean by replacing, when you replace the field, it's South Heagan, the football field, you're replacing that whole field and you're getting another 20 years of life out of it. So those are the types of projects that are big ticket that you're going to be doing to maintain the building. It's maintaining it with new things. It's like putting a new engine in, in a car.
I guess I would really, now that we have more details and now that we have a detailed plan from, from JFA, and I so respect the work that's been done, I would like to just kind of see it side by side with what were we planning to do anyway? And how does it translate to what, to what's being recommended? And how in sync are they? And how much more is in the one plan versus the other? A whole lot more in the one. And I'm getting a whole lot more for my money, right? If I, if I am saying it's the same basic money. But to Josh's point, instead of switching out piece parts of my car that's 20 years old, instead I'm getting a brand-new car that I'm getting some other benefits from, because I have better safety features now and I, it looks good and, you know, whatever. I, I think for me, it's unclear. And if it's unclear for me, where I'm pretty darned part of the process, then it, it just needs to be clearer all around, right? Like, I can't speak to it one way or the other to taxpayer either, if I don't have more clarity. So I think we really need to say, where do they diverge? Where do the plans diverge? And do we, what, what does that cost? And, and what would, what are we giving up to go one way or the other?
Okay, so it sounds as though, you know, I mean, I did say that, you know, we're, you know, JFA is definitely going to be giving us a much deeper presentation. You know, they gave us a, you know, a deep yet surface presentation at the SAU. But it, it's, they are prepared to give us, and, you know, will be giving us a much deeper, more detailed presentation on Monday. The, so I think that's part of it. You know, we need to dive in a little bit more about what those, you know, cost differences are at AMS between the, you know, maintaining, you know, what, what are we really getting if we just maintain? Versus how much bigger is that, you know, two million dollars if we do the project at AMS? So that is definitely something that we can discuss. We can also make sure that they give a little bit more detail on the cost savings of doing both of them together. Because part of this is they did the research and everything like that. And we can ask them to help us with the passing the message and telling the story. If we do decide to put all, you know, all or even part of this on a warrant article this year. But we, we need to have that information too. We can't just be like, I don't know, they know. So we need to make sure that there's a full knowledge transfer and we really truly understand the true depth of it. So we can make sure that that part comes up. Ellen.
Yeah, and, and Victoria just shared in the chat, so I'll just speak at record. We do have the opportunity to go back and watch that meeting. And the JFA meeting as well. I will tell you, and I think Tom would probably agree, it was an incredible amount of information, charts, financial stuff. And we were discussing things that we were initially talking about as separate projects and then suddenly they were bundled together. So it was a lot to absorb. So it might be valuable for us all to just check that out one more time. To review, I, I think I will be, just to get my head around, you know, because certainly when I left the meeting, I was feeling positive, but a little overwhelmed. So I just wanted to put that on the record and anybody who's watching may also want to do that as well.
Okay. So I will make sure that, I'm going to write a note, but I'm going to make sure that that, those two items are mentioned in the question form. I guess you could say that JFA has asked us to fill out just to make sure that they can kind of check it off their list to make sure it's addressed. Any other aspects of this that we want to discuss? Now, this is our first real opportunity.
So, I mean, it, it sounds like, you know, we're going to have this more in-depth presentation on Monday. So, you know, in, I don't, are we, when we're drilling down into the weeds of this on the questions, is there anything you want us to look at? Like, is there anything, or the JFA folks have a recommendation that we should, you know, look at in the next 24 hours to get these questions up and, and ready to go for, for the committee on Monday?
Really, you know, maybe watching it again, watching that part of the board meeting again would be helpful just to kind of, you know, rehear what was said. You know, take a look at the PowerPoint presentation. There was, that was sent over. There was also the, a larger document that was sent out. I, what was it, Josh Master Plan? That is huge, that shows a lot of different renditions of the options that were presented and they had to choose from and things like that. Knowing and understanding, you know, and reading through those would be really helpful. Would be great. So if you could please do that. Ellen, I mean, or Tom, you know, as part of, you know, the JFA committee, you know, can you think of?
No, they met tonight, so I think that just watching tonight's.
Yeah, that was, that was part of the challenge for me. I think that there was going to be a little bit of a dive, a deeper dive tonight, and it was scheduled at the same time as this meeting. But as Victoria just commented, watching their meeting tonight, John D'Angelo had a lot to say. So that may help guide us as well. So I'll be, you know, thank goodness for Zoom recordings, because I'll be watching that.
Can I just ask generally the timeline, you know, for decision-making on things like when we decide we are going to put it on the warrant article, make a warrant article or not, or, and are we going to have sufficient time? Obviously, next meeting, we're just going to be presented to, and we can then discuss some of that. But do we feel like we have sufficient time in upcoming meetings with other budget items to hash this out? Talk it out and decide as a board what's moving forward? And I guess also, when would we be doing that?
So, you know, we've got this, you know, for JFA specific, we've got the bigger, deeper presentation coming on Monday. So, you know, we've got this, you know, for J F A C specific, we've got the bigger, deeper presentation coming on Monday. Ways and Means will also be giving their presentation to us about what they found for their budget aspects on Monday. Will then have the ability to kind of sit, you know, we'll have a little bit of an ability to ask some questions for both groups on Monday. But a lot of it's going to be kind of sitting, thinking, working through it ourselves, kind of individually, because it's not a meeting. You know, over the following week and then we have the we have a bigger budget workshop, sorry, my brain just shut down, a bigger budget workshop on the following Monday, which I believe I said was November sixteenth. With ways and means to hash a lot of this out again and have a deeper, bigger conversation about it. You know, whether it's J F A C, how we want to go through, you know, how we want to handle it. And but also the budget items, you know. On that particular Monday, I'm just trying to bring up my calendar. Yeah, it is November sixteenth. On that particular Monday, November sixteenth, will also be as a board voting items on and off the budget. So all the things that are kind of in the changes spreadsheet. You know, there's things that we've had to add on such as the summer work, you know, the E S Y that was missing. We have to approve the ad for that. We have to approve the subtraction of the health costs, you know, that percentage, we have to, you know, vote on that as a whole. And then all of the other items. And we can do them one by one. Some of it, we can do like a, you know, big, yes, we approve the change of the health insurance. Costs and things like that. If there's a few things that are outstanding, we do, we will not be voting on our final budget total until December. Because at that point, we still won't have the S A U portion of it that I'm hoping by the sixteenth will have a really good idea, but it won't have been approved yet by the S A U until a couple of days later. So we'll have a pretty decent idea of what the final budget number is and what our apportionment is of that. But we can talk with a pretty good information unless the S A U board goes in and like makes massive changes outside of what the committee has worked on, but because the S A U Budget Committee's last meeting is the Friday the thirteenth. So we'll have a pretty good idea of what that final budget is, but it won't be officially approved by the S A U board until the nineteenth, which is three days after our last budget workshop. So our budget will be final approval vote at our December meeting. We can have a few, we can have a little bit more of a final discussion about everything then if there's anything that's outstanding. We do have the ability again, if after the sixteenth, we still have a lot of information that we need. And we can't come to an agreement or decision on anything, we can, just because we run out of time or, you know, whatever, we can schedule another meeting.
Okay, I think that.
Does that answer it?
Because I I just, I I want to be clear, I share Tom and Ellen's and I think probably all of our concern that we have. We can't, we can't necessarily have our cake and eat it too here with, you know, a six percent budget increase and large Warren articles. So I I you know, I guess I had this daydream that we'd magically find things we could just easily chip from the chip away from the budget and we found some of those, but you know, I I'm I'm, I'm, you know, after being through all of these workshops and and looking at everything, not a lot has come up where we've said, oh, yeah, it's clearly, we can just get rid of that on the general budget. So I think we'll we'll have some work to do on all of these items, no matter what.
I just have one more thing to add, just regarding it to follow up from Ways and Means. I was at their meeting on Monday night. And just something that they may bring to us on Monday, but certainly I wanted to bring to us as well. Their general thoughts are that the budget increases is too high. And so they would like to see us focus on getting down to sort of a flat over the default or maybe a one percent margin over the one percent increase over the default. So I know we've come down some from the eight to roughly six point two. But that was one of the things that we focused on or that they were talking about on Monday night that I certainly wanted to share with you guys. Since we meet with them the sixteenth, so not next week, the weeks after, week after.
I do know that that six percent that we're down to now doesn't include the reduction of some of the items that we mentioned in our last meeting and stuff like that. So I know that we haven't removed, you know, the robots are still on there, the I remember what else, but I do know there's a couple of other items that are listed down below. I don't believe those are included in that six percent calculation. So and there's other items that we haven't put on there yet that we did talk about in the meeting, so because we do need to have a little bit of a deeper discussion as well about various things. So just so everybody's aware of that.
Michelle, do you have an update on the robots and the contracts? I know we talked about it extensively last week. Do you know if there's been an update on that?
So based on the most recent conversation, I understood the instructions to be that there was not support for moving forward with robots. So so I did talk with the leasing company and I reached out to the individual that that was my contact at the UV robot company and just, you know, expressed our gratitude and appreciation that they were, you know, working with us and offered this as a solution and took the time to do a demo and and that, you know, it just was a very difficult decision that looking at our budget and all that that the the board is you know, contending with for this year. And so that the timing just was not appropriate to move forward with that agreement at this point. So they completely understood and are, you know, interested in continuing to work with us, should there be interest in the future?
Thank you. So, yeah, so we, you know, we definitely have some work to do. I think you know, one of our jobs that we can each do individually is go through and think about some of the items that have come up, especially in our last meeting, but maybe this meeting as well. Of items that we should add to this list to remove. You know, we wanted to make sure that E S Y was added, so we need to make sure that has been, but we need to go through that process to make sure that we're ready to have a full discussion about it on the sixteenth, which is when we'll be going through and throwing a lot of these things out there. But, yeah, there's definitely things that we identified, but we need to know exactly what we're going to be voting on that night to add to the list.
Did want to mention that it would be helpful to have some clarity on exactly which items the board is wanting to put on that list to modify other than the robots. I'm not clear on if there are other items that you want to change.
I took notes on that from our last meeting, Michelle. So let me.
Well, I know that there was discussion, but I don't know that there was a decision. Be clear that I'm not modifying something that was discussed, but not really decided.
Right, which is why I said the, you know, like the rubbish removal we mentioned, and that's in there in red. So maybe if the, you know, like the Christine took great notes, putting those items in red so we can see them very easily. And then going from there and, you know, so that we can definitely call them all out if we need to add more that are in red. And then we will vote on each individual one at that, or, you know, lump or whatever on the sixteenth. So in that's when we will really start to see that included in that six percent budget. And hopefully it will be less than a six percent at that point. So Ellen.
Christine, we we talk a lot about additional teachers and the numbers, and there was a lot of confusion around that. Would you mind maybe over the next couple of days in preparation for the sixteen, or I guess you have more than a couple of days to really nail that down? And I would like to make the request, and I know I was super sassy in that meeting and I apologize. I would like to say it's a long week, it's just been a long life at this point because I, you know, it's just a lot. So if we could just remove Steve's numbers, like the guessing, you know, and really, other than kindergarten. And really work with what we know we have. I know we have some homeschool students in kindergarten and we're trying to nail that down. I'm sure you've already done some work on that. But if we could just get, this is what we have this year, this is what we're projecting for next year.
She did. She already updated that spread that spreadsheet.
Did we get it?
It's in the, she, it was updated in the budget.
I did email it too, but if you go to the budget, the tab actually has a new date on it. So it's my birthday is the date. So
So now we all know and can remember for an extra.
When's your birthday?
I know. So in enrollment, so the tab is called enrollment ten twenty nine twenty. So if you go into that tab, there's still a lot of information. I was worried about taking information away, but I hope I made it really clear. And I actually made it blue. The heading with updated projections that we did for Clark Wilkins. So and just to contextualize that, we did check in with those thirty families that had enrolled this year for kindergarten. We did not get responses from all of them. But about, and I'm trying to remember, I think it was two, about two thirds of them were planning on going to first grade, if I'm remembering. Yes, yes, two thirds were planning on moving ahead to first grade. Of what of the returns we got. So we're assuming about twenty of the original thirty registered kindergarten students from this year, twenty of them will be going to first grade next year. So for the projections, I did for current kindergarten, we rolled Steve's number over. First grade is our one hundred and eight current kindergarten plus homeschool plus our unenrolled. Plus, we typically get about fifteen new students. So what I did was in those projections, I have the projections, it's column U is the updated projections and there's a big blue bar at the top. If you hover over the little triangle in the corner, it actually explains how I developed those numbers. So hopefully that's helpful for each other grade level, second, third and fourth. I just added five new students because that's pretty typical. We'll usually end up getting like, you know, five students leave us and then ten students come. So it's a, it's a, you know, we a net of five additional students. So I'm hoping those updated projections are helpful in that column U. And then you can see our budgeted classroom teachers. And then what that would mean for our class size there. So students per class with the updated projections.
Would you do the same thing for AMS? Because that wasn't done for AMS.
Do it for AMS because we talked about how the projections we had were so accurate. I'm happy to revisit them and do that for them, but the the Steve's projections actually for AMS were really close to if you look at you know, where our actuals are, but I can definitely connect with Bethany and do that.
Okay. Oh, because we're looking at for that one in particular, we're looking at yeah, just because there's Steve's and Steve's projections and then there's also that plus whole homeschool. So you do have the enrollment plus homeschool.
Yes.
Aspect in there. Yeah, I'm sorry, that one was covered by my straw. So I see that now.
And Ellen, did you want to?
Would you mind emailing just so I can create a file? Because, you know, when budget season is over, we'll still be able to refer back to that. I knew you said you emailed it. I I think I'm having issues with a little bit of email, but if I don't get it, I'll reach out to you.
Yes, I will email it to you, though.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other Terry?
Well, looking at this and Christine, it looks like really the major change was second grade.
Yes.
And a little bit in fourth, but the others were were actually pretty close in their original estimates.
Yes, and you know, we had used those original budget numbers from Steve because it was summertime when we started our budgeting and started talking about staffing and our needs and so forth. So that second grade teacher was definitely you know, we we had originally slotted that for second grade because we were looking at those anticipated numbers, looking at our updated projections. The need is not as strong there, but again, looking at first grade, you know, is there a need actually for eight teachers there? Is our kindergarten number accurate? So this is always such a challenge, you know, we we want to accurately budget the rate number of staff for next year. But if we are too slim, we could be in a situation where we've been in in some previous years where we have, I remember a year we had our huge kindergarten class and had to make adjustments at the last minute and make changes with staffing and and we borrowed even a position from the middle school that year. So we're we're always hesitant to get into a position where we don't have that budgeted for when we, when we're, you know, we have a year where we're just, you know, not totally sure of those numbers. So while it is originally budgeted for second grade, I think our thought is, well, looking at these new numbers, we might not need it for second grade, but how accurate is our kindergarten and our first is creeping up?
And you would obviously put it where it is needed most because that happens every year.
Yes.
Okay.
So Christine, the other thing I remember with Steve's calculation is when he presented it to the S A U board, he said that the first year is really accurate, the second year is also really accurate, but the further out you go, it gets less and less accurate. My understanding with that is every year to two years, we would actually recalculate that number. I don't know if we have been, but I kind of feel like we didn't. And now we're at year like four. Really far wrong. So I think that we need to take his formula and recalculate these numbers going forward. And we, it should be a process that we should make sure we do every couple of year, every year to every two years. Even if we do it every year to kind of project out a couple of years type of a thing, but it's something that we need to keep on top of. Rather than allowing us to get to the end and then redoing it because we weren't accurate this year, but we were very accurate in the first couple of years. So.
Yes, no, that's a good reminder.
Okay, Ellen, did you have?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right, any other discussions? Questions? For tonight? Okay, we have a board, regular board meeting on Monday. The agenda's already been posted for that. And then we'll be touching all of these items again. Everything again on the sixteenth, but with more information from Ways and Means and with a much deeper J F A C discussion. Michelle?
I just wanted to mention that I just put the UV robot adjustment in the proposed changes list.
Thank you. Okay, but that is not as part of the did you include that as part of the six percent? Is it part of the calculation yet or not?
So it's in the proposed changes for the board budget, but not in the proposed changes for the superintendent's budget. Because right, because we're at this process now where the the board is making the proposed modifications. So if you look at on the changes tab, there's a column that says, it's in column K, it says changes adopted by the school board. Now, they're not yet adopted, but they're proposed. So if these were all adopted, the ones that are on there, it would be a reduction of six hundred and thirty five thousand two hundred and fifty two. Which is then brings the budget to a proposed thirty million seven twenty three and and change or a five point nine percent change from the current year.
Okay, so we're I see all that. Where do you get the, like, I'm trying to figure out which percentage number we look at?
Okay, so if if you look at the the percent is comparing the thirty million seven twenty three, if all those changes were adopted, that's what the budget would be to the F Y twenty one budget, the operating budget, which is twenty eight nine eighty six. So if I double click on that, five point nine nine percent. I don't know if you're able to see in the worksheet that it kind of highlights column L, line twenty one, and it also highlights column H, line ten.
Oh, I see it doing M twenty one. But yes, okay, I do see that because there's also the one that is in like sixteen G area that says six point three five. So that's what I was questioning.
And that's the superintendent's budget. You can see that those changes five hundred and thirty one thousand three thirty two. So when you scroll down, you can see at the very bottom that there are some items that are. So when you scroll down, you can see at the very bottom that there are some items that are not included in the proposed changes on the superintendent's budget.
Okay. Clear as mud. Thank you.
I'm going to go over it if you need.
No, I think that once we really start digging in deep on the 16th and start, you know, approving things, we'll really have that full grasp on how this is truly affecting our budget numbers. So.
And I'm happy to put items on there for discussion. If you want to see what the numbers look like, just just let me know. I have to put a date in there for it to capture that it as though it was approved. So I do recognize that these changes have not yet been approved by the board, but I'm putting a date to indicate if they were approved. This is.
Yeah, and you're color coding them for us, which is good so that we know which ones are real and which ones are ideas. Okay. If there are no other questions, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Ellen, and I saw Josh's hand go up second for a second. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Great. Roll call, Josh.
Uncle, yes.
Tom.
Go for it, yes.
Ellen.
Virginia.
Terry.
Amy, yes.
And Kuzma, yes. It is 7:59 and the meeting is done. Thank you, everybody.
Right.
Have a good night, everyone.